So we'll call the regular meeting to order.
No, not that bad.
So there's no action taken, I'm assuming, from executive session?
Right.
Right.
No action is taken. We have no additions or additions? Do we have any additions or additions? No?
No, no additions, additions, no.
So we're on to approval of the Select Board minutes for 1016. I make a motion to approve. None. All those in favor?
Aye.
No, I would say I could open it there.
Pay orders. We have pay orders for $1,755,308.78.
I make a motion to approve.
A second. Here are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Road Commissioners Report. Phil is hunting in Maine, so he's not going to be here. One thing Julie asked that I mentioned. She received a fourth quarter Highway 8 payment of $1,579.54. And I guess that completed the total payments for the year. And the total amount was $85,750. Do we need to do something different? Sandy about giving the town garage repairs?
Well, I just got the email today that we are going to be allowed. She didn't know whether, the VLCT woman wasn't sure whether VLCT would offer any coverage if we did the work ourself. And she just informed me today we could do the work ourselves. But there is that deadline to get it done. I mean, if we're not going to be able to do it within that six-month period by early January, we may apply for an extension. But, so Phil thinks the Roca can do it and...
And does Phil think he can get the repairs done in time?
They haven't discussed that, yeah.
Okay.
So. Truck garage repairs.
Okay. But this seems to still be them.
You want to give a report on your work with Charlie today on better roads and grants?
Yep. Yep. We did, we went and finished out the grants in aid on Sugar Hill. So we certified 11 segments on Certified Sugar Hill. So that's a $27,000 grant. Finished out.
Great.
I talked to Charlie today about this next grant that's in the memo, the Better Roads. And he's already been thinking about which ones to do. Some of those high priority segments. He's going to try to identify the segments now so that as soon as the snow melts in the spring, we can go rather than try to get it approved in the next spring.
That would be great.
So see what's left.
I think that's about it for...
Okay.
A lot of mentions, a lot of things. Jim Bagnell, Barb Kaminsky, and Pat Pranger for reviewing municipal financial records as part of the annual audit. And Jim for volunteering at the transfer station. And the Conservation Commission members for spending a day cleaning up a truckload of litter and debris on Wallingford Pond Road. True Temper donated wood chips for the ball field playground. And there was a group of 14 citizens the other day that spread their... And I wanted to mention Jerry Reynolds, too. I see he was mowing all the lot at the transfer station the other day, so. Public comments. You're here for...
7:05.
We're moving along quite nicely. Oh, so Mark's obviously not here yet. A lot of the time...
Know if he was coming or...
Mark is coming, yeah.
Okay.
For the brick appointment.
Okay.
I'll skip that for now. Rutland Emergency Management Committee Representatives. Jim Bagnell and Mike Hughes have served as our town representatives. And the state legislature requires their participation. And they're looking forward to doing all these. I have talked to Jim, and he was willing to continue. He was a little concerned because he does go to Florida for a couple, three months in the winter time, whether that was okay with the Select Board, but...
Yes.
He's been a very proactive member of this. It's going to be my recommendation that we reappoint him.
He's done a great job, and he's one deserved. When he's here, I'm good with that.
Aye.
Do we need a formal motion to...
No.
I make a motion to appoint Jim Bagnell and Michael Hughes to the Rutland Emergency Management Committee as our Rutland Emergency Management Committee Representatives.
A second. Second. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Go early.
Ralph News is coming from Conservation Commission.
Okay.
I mean, I can do it without him.
Okay. Maybe you get done, and you call him and say it's a done deal.
Stay home. Thank you for listening to my proposed project. It will cost nothing, so it has no budget implications. But I go to the land, the transfer station, as we all do, in and out off of 140. And this patch of Japanese knotweed that used to be the size of a table has started to overwhelm that entire corner. So I don't think we can eradicate Japanese knotweed from the town. It's little patches here and there. But I want to reclaim that corner. And I did some research online. New Hampshire Department of Agriculture has had considerable success with this approach. One day, one morning, you zoom in there, hack it all down, package the leaves and seed pods and things into contractor bags. I've talked to the guys at the landfill about this. They can't be loosely thrown into the landfill because the seeds will get into cars coming in and out of them. It distributes all over the town. That's the difficult part of the thing, is making sure that we try to contain what we take out. Once you've got the stocks down, you pour leaves all over it. Again, the transfer station guys have been great. They're going to donate the bagged leaves that come into the transfer station. So we'll just dump those on top of it and put used tarps all over the entire area that has knotweed. It's this area. So here's Waldo Lane and 140. It's this corner. You cover it with tarps, anchor the tarps, and you go away for five years. That allows the dormancy of some of their seeds to just die out so that it can't effectively grow after five years of being smothered. After five years, we come back, remove the tarps, and we should have a clean, empty, dead knotweed gone spot on this corner. If that happens, I am personally going to donate a 12-foot-tall sugar maple tree, or if that's being threatened by some pest, some other native tree that will survive and just be attractive. We're not proposing a garden on the corner or any kind of formal work there. Just restore it and keep an eye on it so that it doesn't sneak back in there. So this is a one-morning volunteer effort. I will be using front porch forum, because I've already recruited most of the Conservation Commission. They voted unanimously to support the project. But I'll put the call out for other volunteers to just swoop in on a Saturday morning in May. We'll do it. We'll cover it. True Temper has agreed to donate the wood chips to cover the tarps so it won't be an unsightly blue tarp staring at you when you go around there. So I think it could be fun, and at least we're fighting back.
Do you have any, do you have any access to orange vests or anything while you're working near the road sides?
This actually is well off the road. There's a good, there's a shallow ditch that runs here, and then it's about six feet back, so we might be on the road.
Oh, perfect.
I mean, we will park along. And I don't know where we should park, actually. I'll have to research that. Safe place, because it's narrow.
Right.
Yeah, if we do it on a Saturday morning, the transfer station is open. So we'll find a place for the cars to be. Maybe the parking lot on the other side of the bridge, and then walk over to the site.
Yep.
Where's the metal, right back?
Where you could park it stone metal?
Walk back, maybe.
There's maybe six to eight cars that would fit there. I'm looking for maybe 20 volunteers.
Gotcha, so there would make sense to park at the rect field.
Yeah. We'll have to make that clear when we sign them up.
Sounds like a good thing to me.
Yes.
Appreciate you taking the effort.
It's town property, so that's why I'm here. I went to the Conservation Commission first because of their interest. And the Select Board needs to know that this would happen and say that it's okay.
I think we could probably do that by consensus.
Yep, absolutely.
Well, a blessing.
Okay.
Everybody's in agreement?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to introduce my friend Charlotte, who's visiting from Maryland, who wanted to see how a New England Select Board works.
Welcome, Charlotte.
Thank you, because we don't have this.
Hopefully you have good volunteers like Ann there, though.
We do have good volunteers. Thanks, thank you. Thanks a lot. I'll run ahead and rattle Paul.
Okay, good, thank you, Ann. So I didn't get any of those, that additional estimate back yet from Robbie. I don't know if we want to just table this or for 12 with that, a brand name?
Yeah, we probably could table it. I asked Sandy to get another estimate from Rob Steubens because what he gave us made no sense to me. It just, he said he could do it for $270 a fixture. But then in another breath, he said, "And take an hour labor, and he gets $170 an hour labor." Which means he's allowing $100 for a light, which, in my experience, you should put in what they call a high bay light, and they typically go anywhere from $200 to $500 apiece.
Oh.
So I... And I saw some people say I'm trying to favor my son, but I just, I know from my own experiences, you don't really want to just put in a simple light that high up.
Okay.
Just table this for now.
So that $2,700 verbal quote just didn't make sense to me.
Okay. It's not, it's not a rush.
Should we then just ask him to detail what light he was planning on installing, just so we have an idea of that?
Yes. Yeah, that, Justin, I asked Sandy to, for him to give us specifically what he's planning to use for a light.
Great.
Yeah, because this other estimate is much more detailed. Yeah.
Great.
I would agree with that.
I presume we're going LEDs?
Yeah.
Yep.
They will energy cost while we're at it?
Yeah.
I'm not sure we necessarily need to do all 12. I mean, there's four that are bad, so.
Okay.
But we can decide that at a different time or whatever. So we'll table the rest, table that for now. VLCT uninsured and underinsured coverage. Sandy got this from VLCT a while back. Do you want to explain it, Sandy?
Yeah, so we've always had the $250,000 per occurrence coverage. But VLCT, for the first time, is required to ask if towns want the $10 million. She said they've only, Kelly said they've only had one occurrence in all the years that she's been in the last 15 years for any type of claim. She said the $250 would more than cover it. She said $10 million sets you up to them going after you for the, a couple different ways. She just, workers' comp, and then the uninsured. So she felt the $250. She said, "That's, we've always had the $250," so. But this year, they're required to ask if we want that or the $10 million, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we want to increase that.
I would increase, I would agree with that. I don't think we need to increase it to $10 million.
So can I have a motion to authorize Sandy to, Doc, you sign?
I make a motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're authorized to say it, Sandy. Blue Cross coverage for 2024. We had in our packets a...
So Julie will actually go on Medicare. They informed her November 1st, or December 1st rather than January 1st, so even before she turns 65. So that'll be another month of savings, so.
Will she be able to get a supplemental through the Blue Cross?
Yeah, it'll be just the same as Steve's. That's what Steve does as well.
Is this a big price increase or no?
It's like 10%, but we're, because Julie's going down, it more than balances it out. Oh, she didn't catch you, Ralph. It's all done. She said she was going to go home and try to catch you.
Oh, no.
But it's all good, it all passed.
That's good.
Yes.
We've been trying to do something for this for years, and she stepped up to the plate, and she's determined, so.
Good.
And we're going to help.
We appreciate that.
Thanks for stopping, Ralph.
Okay.
We're early, we're ahead of time.
Well, that's good.
So this would be something just we would have to budget for the increase?
We, we budgeted, I think, for an 8% increase, but with Julie going down to Medicare, it's just, I mean, it's not going to be an overall savings as it is, so. Plus, she's going to Medicare earlier than we expected.
So do you think it's going to be under the 8% that we budgeted?
Well, the increase went more than 8%,
Okay.
but with Julie's costs, it's going to more than balance out. I mean, I think we would have started paying $5,663 in January 1st, but with Julie switching up in plans and going from a two-person plan to one-person plan plus a supplemental.
Yes.
It'll be $48,44 a month.
What were we paying then?
We're paying around $52, I think.
Oh, okay. So it might be something.
It might be. I don't know if it'll be savings, but it should be kind of neutral, I think.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
It's a shame, anyway. It's by consensus. Would you like a formal motion on this, Sandy, or just...
It can be by consensus. Continue as is.
Everybody's good?
Yep.
Everybody's good?
On the next one, Joyce and Michael Barriere are willing to take the lead on helping spread the word announcements about this. If you want to go that room?
What do you think? Are we okay with making Joyce?
Yeah, I'm good with them taking the lead.
Yeah.
She was looking for us to make some kind of formal resolution, which not necessarily...
I did write up that letter if you want to do the formal resolution. I don't know whether you wanted to keep the money, optional money line in or not. I actually took it out. Did you see that there was an optional line to donate? But I figured we wouldn't have it in the budget, so.
Yeah, it's not something we budgeted for, so I was concerned about. So maybe just at this point, we let Joyce, Mike take the lead and leave it at that, or...
I'm good with that.
Is everybody good with that?
Do you want to sign a resolution or no?
Do you want to sign a resolution? What does the resolution say?
I don't remember. I read it, and I don't remember.
That one, the one I had ready for you to sign, took that optional line out of providing funding.
Okay.
So the resolution from their template is, "The resolution of the Town of Wallingford, State of Vermont, supporting the Vermont 250th Anniversary Commission. Whereas Vermont Governor Phil Scott signed an executive order to create the Vermont 250th Anniversary Commission on December 15, 2020, to plan, encourage, develop, coordinate, and promote observances and activities to be held in Vermont in commemoration of the historic events associated with the 250th anniversary of the 1776 signing of the Declaration of Independence, Revolutionary War between 1775 and 1777, founding of Vermont in 1777, and the creation of the political foundations of the United States of America. Whereas the Vermont 250th Anniversary Commission hopes to engage all 252 cities and towns through their many programs, projects, and events over the next several years, thereby inspiring future leaders in celebrating Vermont's contributions to the nation over the last 250 years. Whereas by adoption of the Vermont 250th Anniversary Commission, we hope to inspire Vermonters to learn from the history, legacy, and context of the past to build stronger communities for the future. Resolve, the Town of Wallingford officially establishes a liaison or local committee made up of a diverse group of citizens or individuals to work with the Vermont 250th Anniversary Commission on any or all activities. The participants of the Town of Wallingford are voluntary roles, and there will be no compensation for participation. Resolve that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Vermont 250th Anniversary Commission and adopted by the Select Board in the Town of Wallingford and the State of Vermont the 6th day of November."
Plan volunteer activities.
Yeah, saying we'll obligate people to do it.
But they're not going to gain compensation for it. And we have some people who are willing to step up and further organize, so.
Make a motion to...
I make a motion to accept the Vermont 250th Anniversary Resolution.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Everybody got emailed the Fitzgerald Associates Final Design Report and Attachments for the erosion reduction at Helfen Lake. Evan was looking for any comments or concerns on the report. Fine to me, I mean, he covered everything that we've...
Okay, and it's extensive.
Probably more in there than there actually needed to be, so, in my opinion.
Get to build it.
Yes. Looking for money.
So I'm good with this being posted on the website?
Okay.
As in, if anybody wants to...
You got room on the page to actually do it?
We'll see. Load it, and we'll see.
Okay.
There's a lot there, so.
We'll see what happens. We'll see what happens.
Our next step will be to start looking for, to do it. Select Board comments or concerns? Here none, I guess we'll move on to other business.
So Charlie told me today that he opened up the flashing school street radar sign and you have to download a program and then attach it, bring your laptop or tablet up there and try to fix it from there. So I'm going to see if I can download.
I thought we already had that done. I thought we, somebody had the program on a laptop.
No, they need.
Then how'd you program it before?
He was able to just, there was just a couple of very basic switches inside it that they were able to kind of just turn it on. But you have to download a program to change it. So no colors and no flashing words. So.
So I have a question.
Do you know how to do something like that, Mark?
I can figure it out.
Okay, good, because I mean.
I say that with a but. If I find the time to do it.
Because they won't let us move forward on the ones down here until that's fixed.
Well, I, I don't agree with that.
I don't either, because every one in the state looks very similar.
They have set precedence on allowing those signs other places in the state.
I got this one from Chester. I drove through Chester and saw that one. And when I called to find out where they got them, she said, you're the eighth town to call me today. Because everybody likes that one.
And the state allows them on their road, so.
The state saw, the state saw all these specs to this one before they approved it.
The one in Lethal flashes, the one in Proctor flashes and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
May I suggest we do the Noddy and Nice one?
Yeah. I think we should question that. I'm not sure.
Unfortunately, because we asked, now we're penalized.
Well, I think we should question that. How are you, not to be, you know, sarcastic, but how are you, why are you allowing this in other towns and you won't allow it in our town? What's the difference? I mean, ask the question.
Okay.
That's my opinion. I'm.
Yeah.
I mean, some districts, you know, have their own, you know, sets of rules, but.
I went through Woodstock the other day and theirs has a bright blue thing that goes glittery.
Oh, yeah.
And that one's very distracting.
Oh, scares the heck out of me.
But meanwhile, if we can just get the thank you off and
Yes.
just one color, that would be, help us move along the next two down here.
And you have your laptop here.
I mean, I have, I have the tablet. I mean, you should be able to do it on the tablet, right? But then there needs to be, we have to make sure we have a cord that'll connect this to that.
I was going to say, what do we need for a connecting?
Yeah, what's the point they need?
I'm not sure what we'll need to connect the two. And what the software program is that we're supposed to download.
Well, we should be able to go online and download.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think the good question is.
And then when and if we order the next two from Main Street, we'll make sure Elon programs before they send it to us.
Yes.
We won't have colors and thank yous.
Won't have this issue.
Because thank you is very distracting, apparently. My hair's fine, but I don't know.
Somebody had a smiley face on when you went in.
Mm-hmm. They're from me.
Yeah.
Okay.
But then they say these aren't worth it, so what's the point? It's worth it again, but it does nothing.
See if you can get that pro, I mean, you need a ladder to get up there? Any special tools to open it?
Well, Charlie's had it open a couple of times, so he knows how to get into it.
All right, I'll try, I'll talk to him and then go run down the garage in the morning.
All right.
You want to get into it because?
Different connections, each of you, maybe it'll help you.
Yeah, I've got a stack of them, so.
I figured, just in case.
Sorry. Come on, I could just, probably, well, it's been out there for 10 years now. Should I sign it, put it up last time? I don't know, it's left, I mean.
Might need to open your laptop.
It's falling in stones.
Okay, timeline for upcoming municipal budget. So capital, town government, and public safety will be topics on December 4th. Recreation, highway, and appropriations.
December 18th.
On the 18th administration, yeah. Administration, insurance, and revenue on January 2nd. All the municipal groups and nonprofits have been notified of the schedule, so.
Can I just make a request?
Yes.
And it doesn't have to, I guess, not if it's a request, but is there any way that we can get the, or can we ask the groups and committees to have these budgets to us sometime in the next, say, middle of November? Well, say the last week of November. So we have them in our hands prior to this meeting. So when it comes to this meeting, we don't open it, look at their budgets for the first time and say, what are they asking? So it gives us a little bit of chance. That's the highly included. Let them tell us what they need instead of us coming up, you know. So when Phil comes in here, we can take 10 minutes and say, you're requesting this much more sand and this much more. We don't take a half hour to discuss, you know, what he needs the night out. That's just kind of where I was going with it. Because if we have them in advance, at least we can look at them, review them prior to the meeting.
And even if, if everyone can't meet that request, if we still get a bunch of them who can, that's just going to help us get ahead.
Yeah. I mean, we spend an awful lot of time
Yes.
going back and forth, you know, and having them figure out the budgets the night out. Or, you know, if we have them in advance, say, we need something prior to the meeting, prior to this date. I just think it would make the budgeting process a lot easier.
Okay.
I would agree.
And I will make that request. So please, all the way.
Okay.
So Brian McWalters from Vermont Emergency Management has met with Sandy to lower the FEMA buyout applications for the Hunter and Young properties. They're going to submit their documentation as December 1st for the review by the EM on the 15th. We all got copies of Weyden Sewer's report on the playground inspection and the recommended improvements. We have accomplished at least one of those so far with the wood chips.
Yeah.
Do you want the row crew to just take out those other items? There's, there's concrete blocks down there that somebody brought in and there's those homemade pieces?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We should just.
It's on their list.
Yeah.
Maybe we could put a notice out on the front porch that if it belongs to you or if you put it there and want it still, pick it up by such and such a date or it will be discarded.
Sounds good.
I think the the chrome and rungs have been replaced too at this point, so. Do we want to come back to the recreation appointment or table it?
Are we going to table it because Mark's not here?
Do we have to? I mean, do we need him here for that?
No.
We don't, we don't need him. It would just be nice to have met him.
Like, I don't know who he is.
Nobody, nobody on the board knows who he is.
Right. But I mean.
I mean, technically, we don't.
I mean, why not vote him in and then just say, hey, sometime, stop by, say aye.
Okay.
Not against that.
I mean, I like to see fresh bodies. I don't, parks are a good thing. I don't want to wave about here.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. What was your name, Mark?
Mark Noble. Mark Noble.
All right, I'll make the motion to appoint Mark Noble to the recommended.
I second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those none? And finally, the public hearing for the school street sidewalk project will be Thursday, November 9th, starting with a walk at 4:00 p.m., followed by a hearing on the second floor at 6:00 p.m. Most is all over the place for it, so hopefully everybody's getting to work.
Over and knocking down the street, say, hey, time to go to a meeting. Come on, join me.
Drive him out the door.
Check him out the door, come on. I make a motion to adjourn.
Those in favor?
All right.
We are adjourned.